Hi, and welcome to Tony Time. Well, today on our show from Ward Six, we have Norm, who has been on our show before. So, we're going to call him a family member. And, Norm, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
Glad to have you back. So, how've you been?
Been well. Can't complain.
Good.
No one really wants to listen to people complain.
No, they don't. They say they do.
They say they do, but...
But, they don't. So, how are you feeling about the elections coming up and everything happening?
I'm, you know, hopeful about the elections coming up. We'll see what happens at the end of the day. But, I'm happy with what's happening in the city. I really think that things are going well. And hopefully, the election turns out that we can keep going the way we're going.
Well, let's start with a few things here. The clock tower. How's that going?
The clock tower's going great. I mean, the grant that we got from the Hotter Bedford obviously helped get that fixed. It's now back up. The clock is back chiming away up at the top of the towers. It's great to see it back there. It's really kind of a nice symbol of the town and a symbol of where things are going on Main Street and Bedford generally.
Well, you know, Steve and I were talking right before you arrived here. And, you know, he brought up a very interesting fact, which was years ago, when people worked at the mills, they used that clock to go to work.
Yeah, it kind of scheduled the time.
It has a history.
Yeah, people clocking in and clocking out.
Yeah.
And John Calvin Stevens designed the whole City Hall, who's kind of a relatively famous architect, and it's a beautiful...
I didn't know that.
...symbol of, you know, the downtown. Yeah.
And that's a symbol too of years ago.
Yeah, and of the whole history of the downtown.
Yeah. So, I didn't know any of that, you know? And I thought it was really interesting. And when Steve brought that up, I went, "Yeah." Could be 50 years ago, people would be going to the mill...
Yeah, and they'd be looking up and listening to the clock.
They'd be looking up if I'm on time.
Yeah, because people walked. I mean, most people walked from everywhere. That's why all of the... You have all of those buildings that are down, you know, multi-tenant buildings on, you know, Water Street, Cleve Street, that sort of stuff. That's actually where I grew up, on Cleve Street. So, these buildings were for people who worked at the mills and walked to get to work every day.
Wow. So, you know, there's been a lot going on on City Council.
A little bit. A thing or two.
Just a couple of things that have been going on. So, the parking garage is going forward.
Parking garage is going forward, and which, you know, I've been a big supporter and proponent of the parking garage. Not so much that we need... That it helps and solves the parking problem entirely on Main Street and for the stores down there. But, what it does is, it's actually kind of an investment. It's kind of almost like a, you know, industrial park. You build the garage, and it increases the value of all the surrounding properties. When you increase the property, the value of all the surrounding properties, it increases the tax dollars that come through the door. And the more tax dollars you get from developers, the less homeowners have to pay. And, you know, a conservative estimate is $16 million in the next 10 years of extra... Well, 10 years after the garage is finally open, of extra tax revenues that come into the coffers that would otherwise have to be paid for by you and I. So, we can get business people to do it. That's better for us.
So, then you're saying it's not costing anybody any money in Bedford?
Well, not directly costing anybody... It's not costing any of the homeowners any money in Bedford. There are TIF dollars that are being... Which is tax dollars being paid by the developers in that particular region. And those people's tax dollars are helping fund a portion of the building of the garage. But, there are no general revenue funds that are going to pay for a single dollar. So, between the users of the garage, the users of the parking lot, and a little bit of the developer dollars in the TIF funds are going to pay for the garage. And then, so, none of it comes out of our pockets, but we do get this extra boost from other sources.
Right, exactly. Why is everybody so upset about it?
People are upset about it for a couple of different reasons. One, I think they were upset with the parking plan generally more than the parking garage. I don't think people are as angry about the parking garage as they were about paid parking in the lots downtown. So, I think there's a spillover of that kind of anger. And there's just a general belief that somehow or other, this is helping... Is going to help the developers and not help any of the taxpayers downtown, which is wrong, I think, in reality. It's not going to make that kind of difference. But, the parking garage, it hits on a vein of, why are we putting money that's going to help developers downtown? And they're missing the bigger picture that by building the parking garage, which won't get built otherwise, because it can't get built by developers, because they, you know, the profits aren't there to make it. And they'll say, "Well, if it's not profitable for the developers, why is it profitable for us?" And they say, "Don't..." You know, so, if it doesn't make sense for them, why does it make sense for the city? It makes sense for the city because, like an industrial park, you're not going to get a developer to build an industrial park, but it brings in all of these businesses who employ people and who pay taxes, and so the city benefits from it. In the same way, the parking garage will bring in businesses who will employ people, which will help everyone, and will also pay taxes, which will help everyone. So, it makes sense for the city to do it in a way that it doesn't ever make sense for a private developer to do it.
Yeah, you know, because as I was listening of people kind of maybe not understanding it, or the media wasn't going out correctly, but I also have to remember that some people interpret things in their own way.
Mm-hmm. And it's okay, you know?
Yeah.
And there are people... I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, people have... Who are against it are misguided or are doing something improper. They believe that it's not going to work. And, you know, I believe that they'll be wrong, and I hope I'll be proven right now that we're moving forward with it. But, I think there's anger about stuff generally. But, I also think when you have very complicated issues like this, this is the whole reason that you have, you know, representatives up there who will hopefully do the heavy lifting for you, who will read all of those parking studies, read all of the stuffing, and make a reasoned decision.
But, that's why you're there.
That's why I'm there. I mean, that's what we're elected for. We're not elected to be mouthpieces for just the citizens. If we were a town meeting kind of government, where everything went to the town meeting. But, that's not what happens. We aren't every day... And it's interesting that this particular issue is pushing people, saying, "This should go out to a vote," because pretty much every week, we take a vote on something that impacts people, that isn't necessarily... We don't go out and poll the populace and see what we want to do.
Right.
We do it when we vote for the budget. I mean, the budget has lots of controversial things in it, and there's a give and take that goes through the whole budget process. And we make compromises, and there are some things I want that I don't get, and there's some things other people want that they don't get. But, that's part of the whole process, and it works to have these representatives who make those kind of compromises for you and gets voted on, and then we move on. It's the same thing with the parking garage. For whatever reason, this has become a hot button item that they feel should go out to the voters, but you send it out to the voters, they will not have the time to digest all of the information that we on the council have had to digest over the course of the last three years. I've been spending tons of time going over spreadsheets, et cetera, and all of the counselors have done as well. And you can't just... You can't boil that down to one sentence of, "Should we have a parking garage?" And it isn't a question of getting the message out or getting people to understand. And it's not that they're not smart enough to understand, should they, you know, want to devote the time to do so. It's that most people don't have the time to do so, and that's why we're there to help do that and do what we think is right for the city. And that's what I've been trying to do.
Well, you know, I mean, a lot of the meetings open to the public.
Yeah.
Sometimes we have a full room.
And sometimes, there's nobody there.
There's nobody there.
I always find it somewhat laughable when we say, "Okay, we'll turn it now to the public," and there's nobody there to even stand up.
Right.
But, we have to do it because that's the process.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, more often than not, people are not there rather than people being there, which is a shame.
Yeah, and now with our newspaper, the Journal...
Going away, which is awful.
Which is awful. And, I mean, I know everything is online with City Hall, if people want to go in there and read it. The people who are not computer savvy, you know, they watch the show, you know? So, I don't know how else you can make it any clearer.
I don't know. We try, and it'll still get garbled from time to time.
I know, and that's normal anywhere.
But, that's okay. You know, that's, you know... It's like we used to play with the kids, you know? We played the game of telephone, and you'd whisper something in one ear, and you'd go down the line.
Yeah.
What came out of the other end was completely garbled from what was said in the first place. But, that's part of the process. But, I do... Losing the newspaper, the Journal Tribune, is a big loss as far as I'm concerned. I understand the economics of it, but it's a way for a good segment of the population to get its, you know, its news, somewhat unbiased and non-varnished. It's also we're going to lose all these local interest stories, where you'd have articles about, you know, kids going... Who were doing dancing, or, you know, the local Mason Hall having some sort of, you know, quilting fair. You know, all of those kind of local things, there's not going to be an easy source to get that kind of information going forward. It's a true loss.
It's a true loss, because a lot of people with their morning coffee would sit down and drink, you know, read over the newspaper, and you're right. All those warm-hearted things happening, events.
People weren't getting their national news there from there anymore.
No.
There was some of it there, but that's not the source. When I was a kid, that was the source. You actually... I mean, you... There was only a few people who actually even got the poll in Press Herald. So, you basically got, you know, the Bedford Saco Journal at the time, and, you know, you got the evening news on one of the three stations. But, it's... That's, you know, evolved over time. But, this is really the only source of the kind of those local interest stories. And the internet is not going to have... Doesn't have a... At least at this point, it's not a great replacement for that at this point in time.
Right.
And there are, like you said, lots of people who don't go on the computer, aren't computer savvy, don't want to do it. So, you know, our... This kind of public access and the newspaper were kind of sources of that kind of information.
Yeah, it's a shame.
It's a shame.
So, going forward, how... What do you see for the city five years from now?
What do you see for the... Hopefully, we will see, you know, continuing development of downtown, but of also the other areas. I mean, there... You look at the burgeoning of what's happening, and you look at the whole Five Points area and how that is redeveloped over time, as well as Bedford Crossing. I think you'll see a lot of development happening associated with the courthouse and Route One, that sort of stuff is going to happen. I, you know, I'd like to see, you know, the downtown continue to develop. I think you'll see the Mill District, you know, getting larger and that stuff happening. And at the same time, we need to figure out ways to not lose sight of people being displaced with all of this progress.
Yeah.
You know, the gentrification is neither good nor bad. It is just a fact. It has some very positives to it, but we need to also recognize that it does result in displacement of people. We need to think about affordable housing and workplace housing, homelessness, all of those issues need to get dealt with as well. But frankly, you know, deeper coffers makes it easier to handle those sort of things. You know, we have every year when we go to the budget battles over the, you know, social services budget. I'm on the committee that actually doles out the social service numbers. And we, you know, there are some on the council who just as soon see that number be pared down more and more. But, those are crucial services, and I'm always pushing to see those numbers be as high as we can get them to be.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we want to lose sight of the disenfranchised of sorts, because they need to be taken care of as well, and that's important. And so, I'd like to see the city of Bedford be vibrant commercially, which will give us funds to be also compassionate to those who need our compassion and our help.
I mean, but look at how many children do not have a home in their couch surfing.
Yeah, I mean, homelessness, people need to recognize, doesn't mean they're living in a box on the street.
Right.
But, they don't have a permanent address, which means that they're couch surfing from one place to another. That's not...
No.
That's not right. That's not the way we want it to be.
No.
They're our most fragile and vulnerable, and they can't, you know, take care of themselves. We need to be, as much as it may seem, like Big Brother, Big Sister, or Social Engineering, whatever. I think we need to be providing an umbrella to keep them out of the rain, figuratively, not literally.
Yeah, true. Yeah, because when I was hearing the statistics and all of that, and one thing I noticed in particular, I... Last year or the year before, I signed up to be a substitute teacher.
Mm-hmm. That's... God bless you. That's not easy.
I did it once.
I can understand that.
I mean, I adore children. Um, I didn't know what it entailed, you know, but I thought, "Okay." And I went to the grade school, and the teacher had left me notes. I never experienced anything like this, ever, and I had no idea. And so, I was told to be at the door of the classroom by 7:00 a.m., greet the children. Okay? So, I did, you know, and all these kids are coming in, running in, you know, not saying hi. I'm going, "Hi." "Hi." And they brought in milk and cereal and juice, and I watched these kids run to that.
Yeah.
And one of the girls in the class said, "He took three, and I'm hungry." Broke my heart.
Yeah, it's really... It's painful. School is very different from what it was, you know, 30, 40 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
My daughter is a... Just a brand-new teacher, teaching fourth grade. And, you know, there... It's no longer... It used to be you'd come in and you were a teacher, and you dealt with teaching the subject or whatever.
Right.
And even in her case, in fourth grade, so she's dealing with nine-year-olds. You're now... You're a developmental therapist. You have to be a social service provider. There's all of these needs that these children come into your class with, that they're either not getting at home or can't get at home, or from other sources. And, you know, you're now a major source of support, emotional and not only teaching, and you have to do that as well.
Right.
But, you're also providing all of these other services to them, and you're the point person on those sort of things, and you're an adult that can make a huge difference in people's lives. And the schools are becoming far more than a teaching institution. It's a social service institution.
Yeah.
And that's not easy. And, you know, it's not easy to be done, and it takes dollars to do that sort of stuff. We've been blessed with not having the school budget increase very significantly in the last three years that I've been on the council, thankfully. But, that's not always going to continue. That depends on state support as well as other things. And the jobs they have to do is very difficult, and there's not this huge fat in the budget while saying, "Well, we'll just cut something, and, you know, we'll be able to provide more with less." It's easy to say that.
Yeah.
It's a lot harder to implement it, and schools are really very important, and they're a crucial part of our future, frankly.
Oh, definitely.
And, you know, so, we need that, and we need to, you know, keep on supporting that as best we can. And it's not an easy thing to do, and it's, you know, I... God bless every single one of those teachers who, you know, from kindergarten on up, their role and job is difficult, and they do a yeoman's job, you know, every day.
Oh, definitely. Going back to parking on Main Street and all of that. Now, truthfully, I can still go to my stores and pull up and run in, and nothing's changed, has it?
No, nothing really. I mean, parking on Main Street has always been timed parking.
Yeah.
And it's always been free. And parking on Main Street continues to be timed parking, and it continues to be free.
Ah.
Same thing with all of the streets in Bedford. Frankly, there is no paid parking on a single street in Bedford.
Right.
And what the parking plan that was instituted, and that I realize is controversial and that, you know, people disagree about, was to effectively say, "For the lots, however, you know, what we want on Main Street and on the side streets are the customers to be able to park. And we want you to be able to go when you go get your haircut, or when you go to the bank, or do any of those sort of things, that you have a place to park." And the idea was to make the incentive to... That the street parking be used by people, by customers, and that the longer-term parking for the residents and for the employees would go into the lots, and those lots would be paid for by the long-term users. And those long-term users would pay for those lots, and the money we got from those lots would be used to maintain Main Street and the plow.
Right.
It takes extra cost to plow and maintain all those streets.
Oh, yeah.
For other businesses, the business owner pays for the maintaining of the lots and the plowing, et cetera. However, in downtown, the city takes care of paying for the plowing and the maintaining. And what we're trying to do is say that it shouldn't be a burden on all the residents generally, but the users, the people who benefit from that, namely, the store owners and the landlords, and, you know, end up, they pay to the extent they're paying for their employees to park in those lots, or the tenants are paying, and that that gets used to maintain those streets. And so, effectively, downtown has free parking for customers in a way that other parts of the city, the employers have to pay for the free parking for those customers and for their employees.
Exactly, exactly. You know, I... Thinking of the city council and everybody there, and everybody contributes their knowledge, their passion for the city. What do you feel your contribution...
My contribution, maybe?
That's it!
Or contribution, if you'd like. Either one... Either one works for me.
Okay.
My contribution. You know, I think I bring, you know, because I'm a lawyer, I bring with it a more analytical mind when it comes to the statutes. I spend more time digesting the actual wording, because wording makes a difference in the end of the day.
Yeah.
So, that's one of the things I bring, I think, to the council. But, I also bring with it a compassion, I think, for the whole town. I'm looking for what we're doing the right thing. I have not been successful, but I've been trying to add people to the fire department, for example, because I think we need more firemen. And fireman is kind of a misnomer. They're firemen slash EMTs. We're more of a emergency medical rescue team that puts out fires as well than the other way around. But, so, what I try to bring to it is it's a compassion to try to deliver those services that I think need to be delivered, that are being, you know, set aside, you know, I think being pushed back a little bit because of financial concerns. So, I bring that, and I, you know, so, I bring, I think, in a level of analysis and a level of compassion that hopefully helps the city as a whole. There are people who are far more fiscally conservative than I am. I will, you know, admit broadly that I am more willing to spend money than some of my other members on council. It's good that we actually have both.
Yeah, I think so.
Because I think it's because it's going to be... It's a balance. I really think this council is a wonderful council. It's a very collegial group. There are people on this council who are, you know, probably 80%, 90% of the time vote differently than I do if it's not a unanimous vote. And yet, I respect every single one of their opinions, and I think it's helpful to have them on there. It's helpful to have that give and take, that, you know, we need to also... And I don't... Not that I'm fiscally irresponsible. I don't mean to say that. But, I, you know, when we spend money, we need to be careful that we're getting the most bang for our buck. But, we can't be, you know, penny wise and pound foolish either. We can't, you know...
Yeah.
Sometimes, you know, investment begets return, and you have to make those kind of investments in order to, you know, in the longer run, keep your tax dollars down. It's kind of like the sort of investment at the garage. In the longer run, I think, will benefit taxpayers in the future. We on the council may have different ideas of where to best invest those dollars. And again, that's where the good compromise, the back and forth, and that's where I think it's helpful to have a council. If you had nine counselors like Norm Belanger, boy, first of all, that would be ugly.
Boy!
I don't think you'd be able to film it anymore. Put it on public access, but that wouldn't be a good thing. I think you need to have...
No, you need that.
You have to have a balance of the different types of folks on the council, and I think it's important, and, you know, we'll see. You may not even have a Norm Belanger on council come December. We'll see.
Aw, Norm!
We'll never know. We'll let the voters decide on that one.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know, I know. But, you know, I mean, I watch everyone, and you're absolutely right. Everybody has an opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not all alike.
No, we're not all alike, which again, is a good thing.
Which is a good thing. And like you told me before, and I agree with you thoroughly, is that you're on the council to make the heavy decisions. But, I see all of you trying to get input from the people.
Yeah, we... I mean, I listen when you have that input from the council. You do listen. I've, you know, made changes in my decision based on what's coming from that input, because if it, you know, what they have to say, you know, influences my decision-making, and it does on occasion influence it. There's some times where I say, "Well, I don't agree with that," and I think you don't understand for A, B, or C reasons.
Right.
But, there are plenty of times where you think, "Well, it gives me pause. This is what, you know..."
You have to think... Maybe you didn't think about that.
And there... Between people's opinions that come and speak on any issue and other opinions on the council, I've changed my mind. I've come in after reviewing all the council materials, thinking, "Okay, this is where I'm coming out on this issue."
Yeah.
And I've been convinced that that's wrong, and that wasn't the way to go. That's what it should be doing. That's what I like the council debates, because I do appreciate listening. And this council is so respectful of one another.
Yeah.
Unlike any other level of government I've ever watched from the sideline. I haven't been involved in other level of government, which I don't intend to be involved in any other level of government. But, this is such a respectful group of one another's opinions, even when we feel the other person is 100% dead wrong, there's always a level of respect that's just, I think, admirable, and hopefully someday will also appear in the State House and in Congress and that sort of stuff. But, that's what makes this job... I mean, it's a lot of work. This is a very heavy lifting job.
Yeah.
And we work very, very hard, $400 a month, which amounts to about 25 cents an hour, which my wife says I'm overpaid. But, you know, what makes this job bearable is the fact that it is a respectful group.
Yeah.
If you were sitting there, and it was contentious, and people were calling each other names and weren't listening to one another, that would be not a good thing, and that would be hard to do this job, you know? But, this group is, you know, I can... I have nothing but praise for all of my other, my fellow council members. So, I'm happy to be working with all of them, and I'm glad that they're all on the council with me.
Well, you know, and that's... And I mean, I'm new to all this, so, you know, and I do see that, and I'm looking at it from a point of view of, I've never been involved within a community. I lived in Manhattan.
Mm-hmm. It's not a small town.
No. And, you know, you have alternate sides of street parking.
Mm-hmm.
And if not, you go pay for it.
That's right.
Or you park five blocks away from your apartment, and you walk. Or you park five blocks away from your apartment and you walk.
That's right. People walk everywhere. I mean, it's just, it's astounding. We're so used to getting in our cars and driving everywhere.
Yeah, see, I was never used to that till I moved here.
It's very different, so.
And I'm learning so much from the people, from all of you up there about, you know, okay, we're gonna try to help you with this, we're gonna try to make it better. I mean, those are foreign words to me when I'm sitting back there.
Yeah, and we try to make it, I mean, not only the whole parking issue, when the parking thing got implemented, you know, we formed this downtown committee at the same time. And the downtown committee was to try to say, look, we're not sure we got it right, we're not sure it's perfect, we probably didn't get it right. And I can tell you, we did not get it entirely right. It's not perfect, it's still not perfect. However, you have a committee that's designed to say, you have an issue, let us know, let us look into it and let's see if we can fix it. And we've been, you know, tweaking it. And some people say, well, you should have figured this all out before, but until it's implemented, you can't see where.
You can't, you can't think of all those things.
You can't think of all of the problems. We probably should have thought of more of them. I am the first to admit, this is far from perfect implementation. We've screwed up. I will, you know, go online, here, look at the camera, I, we screwed up, but we're trying to fix it. That's the key, is we're trying. If you look at Franklin Street and the, you know, the lots, you know, now that that's a two-way street, we've added all sorts of on-street parking. You know, we're now changing the names of the lots, you know, because who knows where the yellow lot, the blue lot, the, you know, purple lot, you know, all that sort of stuff. You know, I, I do know the brown lot, because it's near the municipal sewer thing, and so I can remember brown on that one. But we're gonna call it where it is, you know, the Foss Street Lot is gonna be the Foss Street Lot, Franklin Street Lot, you know, Washington Street Lot, the Alfred Street Lot, it makes sense. So we're trying to do stuff to make it work better. And we're, you know, and rather than tear it down, if people have ideas to make it work better, you know, shoot me an email, because I'm chair of that committee and, you know, go on the next agenda. There've been requests for, you know, handicap parking spots at certain locations, et cetera. We're there to try to make this thing work. It's not us against, you know, them. It's, this is, you know, this is the city, we're, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a, I park downtown, I want to make it work and so I want, make it work for everyone. And anyone who has ideas of how to make it better, you know, if there are things that need to be tweaked, if we need to make this section one-hour parking rather than two-hour parking, four-hour parking, anything we can do to make this implementation better, that's the whole idea of this committee, is that it can consider it, it can vote on it and it becomes implemented immediately. You don't have to go through two council readings and wait 30 days. And so there is an attempt to try to make this thing work better. And we do listen and we've made lots of changes from requests. We've pizza maid requests for changing for 30 minutes and then to one hour. And we've been trying to be responsive to those requests. You won't always get the answer you want necessarily, you know, because I, I often get voted down when I'm trying to make some of the changes as well. But nonetheless, it's, there is a mechanism to try to deal with all those issues and it's good that it's there and available. And people should take advantage of it if they have concerns, constructive concerns, you know.
Well, until it's put in place, you can check, research forever and think you've covered everything, but until the people speak up.
Right.
And make you aware of it, so I'm telling everybody, speak up.
Yeah, and you, you know, even anyone else planning it would have made other mistakes. I mean, there would have been mistakes made, because you don't think of everything and everyone doesn't see it. It's when you go and you go, but that was dumb, you know, why'd we do it, why'd we put that here, why did we do that there? And then you say, okay, well, let's fix it. It's like, you know, when you build a house and you think, why did I put, like, why didn't I put a light switch somewhere near the door where I come in? So there's always changes and stuff you make along the way and, you know, that's what we're gonna try to do. And that's what hopefully, you know, continues to happen, so.
I have one more question for you. Unfortunately, we're running out of time, but, okay, explain to all of us the technicality between a kiosk and a parking meter.
Well, a kiosk, I mean, a kiosk can be a parking meter. And it, you know, to me, and it's arguable, you know, that the kiosk can be indeed a parking meter and that it's a parking meter in the lots. And so I won't deny that that's a potential argument, that's definitely a thing. And there is a question that, whether the referendum covered the parking lots or just the streets. So that's one other issue besides where the parking meter is. However, when the kiosk is being used for, you know, for timed parking, for, you know, permit parking.
Right.
So you have a monthly permit and you're using a kiosk as a way of going in, that's kind of like, you know, the toll, the booth at a, at a parking garage. When you go into a booth or the parking garage and you have a monthly pass, you pay, you know, you go in, at that point, that kiosk is not working as a parking meter, you're not paying for timed parking, it's being, so it depends on how it's being used. But I don't want to get into an argument of the technicalities of all that. You know, arguably, yes, when you're doing it for hourly parking, it is a parking meter. And assuming it is a parking meter in that point, does it apply? You know, my mind, I don't think that the referendum meant no paid parking anywhere downtown. Because if you wanted to say no paid parking anywhere downtown, it would have been easy to put the question and say, do you want no paid parking downtown? Instead, they said they wanted no parking meters downtown. That's far more specific and it implies you can have other types of paid parking, you just didn't want parking meters. And to me, it, when I went and voted on that, I thought it meant the streets and I don't think it meant the lots. I don't believe it included the lots. And I still to this day don't believe it includes the lots. I clearly don't believe it includes the lots for monthly and weekly parking, which is what it's primarily being used for right now, so.
Yeah, I just wanted you to kind of touch on that a bit, because I hear that a lot.
Mm-hmm, and the question isn't, is it a kiosk or a parking meter? Are we playing some sort of game semantically with all of that? I, you know, I don't want to pay, play those semantic games, you know, if you want to concede that, okay, a kiosk can be a parking meter, sure. I still don't believe that the referendum meant that you couldn't have paid parking in the lots owned by the city, so.
Makes sense to me.
So, but.
And now that you broke it down to the audience.
They may or not, may not agree, they may feel that it meant, you know, and there are plenty of people who believe, including some of my fellow counselors, who believe that the referendum meant no paid parking downtown. But it just seems to me that if you wanted to say no paid parking downtown, that isn't a hard sentence to put together. It would have been easy to say that. And it isn't what the drafters of the, you know, say, well, we interviewed some of the people and that's what they meant. The reality is, it doesn't make any difference what they meant, it makes a difference what the voters were voting on and what they were reading in the sentence. Because, you know, how I craft the question doesn't really, you know, your answer is gonna be what you think the question means, not what I thought when I put the question.
Right, exactly, Norm. I mean, it's like, when you read something, I mean, even on an email, you wake up, you're in a good mood, you get an email, you go, oh, that's nice. Next morning you get up, you're in a bad mood, you go, well, what did they mean by that?
Yeah, exactly. You read all sorts of stuff into it, that's for sure, so.
So, you know, this is what I think is happening, but I do know, everybody can go to City Hall and watch the meetings there as well.
And I invite, you know, people should come and should give their feedback and input and that's, that's a good thing.
I think, you know, I've never, well, I've never witnessed where the public can come in and say, I'm really angry about this, blah, blah, blah. And I watch all of you take it in. I watch you guys take notes.
Yeah, and we'll listen, I, I listen to the anger.
I know you do.
You know, I don't, you know, I always appreciate getting yelled at, but on the other hand, I, you know, when, when someone is shouting and saying that they're angry about something or even not shouting, they're just expressing their displeasure. You know, I, I need to sit there and listen and say, okay, why are they so angry? What's, what's behind all of this? You need to go beyond the emotion and say, what's behind it? And is there some legitimate reason we should be changing what we're doing? Because it's causing this level of displeasure. It isn't that we're not listening or that I don't hear. Like I said, I won't always agree. But I am taking it all in, at least, and I try to take it all in. I think all my fellow counselors do as well. We're not shutting down, oh, he's coming up again. We're listening to what they have to say, we may not agree with it, but I'm also trying to analyze, okay, what's valid in what they're saying, what's not valid in what they're saying, what's behind what they're saying that needs to be taken into account in our decision-making process, so.
I've watched you after a lot of people have come up and they spoke about whatever topic it was. And I almost see you go, okay, I have to talk about this, I have to talk about this. And you come back with an acknowledgement of like, respect. You always respect the people, everybody does on the council. But I watch you come back and say, okay, let me explain this to you. It takes you maybe all five minutes.
Well, I mean, I want to acknowledge what, that I've heard you.
I know.
And I also want you to understand where I'm coming from. If I disagree with you, I need, you need to at least understand my explanation of why I'm coming at this differently from what you've told me. And I, that's what I try to do. I mean, that's, I mean, hopefully I'm successful. I think sometimes I feel tongue-tied, I try to come up with something, duh, duh. But, you know, I try to explain the things as best I can, so people can understand why I'm making the decision that I'm making. They may not agree with it, but I want them to understand I'm doing it because I think it's best for the city and why I'm doing it and why I think it's best for the city. And they can disagree and they might be right and I could be wrong.